Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated May 27, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist with hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naido?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
And President Fox, here.
Okay, and now it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can stand, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at Rlicatis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of July 6?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So moving on, we're on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. So my, these are my old glasses. My new ones are broken, so I have to take them off. Forgive me. The Summit Police Department is hosting National Night Out Against Crime on August 3rd from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. The annual event features a variety of municipal, county, state, and federal level agencies, including displays and demonstrations by Union County SWAT, New Jersey State Police, and K-9, along with Summit Police, Summit Fire Department, Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad, and the Division of Public Works. There will be food trucks and entertainment. Free hot dogs will be provided at the Summit PAL food cart. National Night Out is also designated as Community Night, which is an opportunity for local nonprofit organizations to share information with the public. If you are a part of an organization that would like to participate, information is available at summitcommunityprograms.com. This is a great night. We were sad not to have it last year. I know that a lot of folks are looking forward to it, so please come down and join us again August 3rd from 3 to 9 at the Green. Yesterday, I had the great pleasure of swearing in our newest member of the Summit Police Department, Officer Babatunde Lawal. Officer Lawal previously served with the Union County Sheriff's Office. He is a certified PT instructor at the John H. Stammeler Police Academy where he actively trains the police recruits. If you see him over the next few months, please stop and welcome him to Summit. Police Chief Andrew Bartolati is not in attendance this evening in the building due to a medical condition. Although he had received the J&amp;J vaccine, the chief tested positive for COVID-19 late last week and is recovering at home. We wish him a very quick recovery. I'm happy to say that the gates in the DeForest parking lots will be removed beginning Tuesday, August 3rd, weather permitting. Parking kiosks will be installed and are expected to be in operation by Monday, August 16th. And as a reminder, I have office hours tomorrow at City Hall from 10:30 to 12:30. No appointment is necessary. Please stop in if you would like to speak with me. And if that time of day is not convenient for you, please send me an email, and we can always set up a time to get together here in City Hall or wherever may be convenient for you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on for the council president's report. You may notice some construction going on near the pond at Bryant Park. A shed has been built to house aeration equipment that Union County will use to rehabilitate the pond. The idea is to use aeration to decompose the sediment at the bottom of the pond to increase the pond's depth. Once the city knows more about this project, we will be sharing that information on social media and through website notifications. The next Summit Free Market event is Saturday, August 14th from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Summit Transfer Station at 40 New Providence Avenue. No appointments are needed for this event, but volunteers are needed. If you can volunteer for a shift, email pressoffice@cityofsummit.org. As a reminder, no unsorted boxes or bags will be accepted. Please bring only yard sale quality items. You can also share items on the virtual Summit Free Market Facebook group if you cannot make it on August 14th. Smoke alarms that are properly installed and maintained play a vital role in reducing fire deaths and injuries. Habitat for Humanity will provide and install free smoke alarms for homeowners in Union County. To schedule an appointment, call (973) 624-3330, extension 103. And I believe you can also find this information on the city's website and Facebook page. This is the final common council meeting until September. Council will return on Wednesday, September 1st at 7:30 p.m. in the council chamber. I wish everyone a happy, restful, and fun summer, and we look forward to seeing everyone then. So now we'll be moving on. So as the mayor mentioned, Chief Bartolati is not here in person, but he is going to do a brief presentation on the screen over there. So, audio. So Chief, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Council President.
Okay.
Audio coming in okay?
Yep, you sound great. So we're going to turn it over to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mayor. This is Council President Fox and members of council. My apologies for not being able to be there with you this evening, and I want to thank you all for your understanding as I work through my recovery from the virus. I'd also like to take an opportunity to apologize in advance should I need to pause or mute myself at any point during this presentation officially. I wanted to take a moment tonight to discuss the recent release of the department's semi-annual uniform crime report. As you may know, the UCR report is published annually by the FBI and is comprised of crime statistics from throughout our country. Locally here in New Jersey, law enforcement agencies are required to report crime stat information to the New Jersey State Police on a monthly basis. This information is then compiled into a statewide report for the federal government. While there is no statutory regulation that requires law enforcement agencies to publish this information, this administration is doing so in the spirit of transparency. The recent semi-annual report that was released via our social media platform on Monday represents the crime stats during the six-month period of January 1st to June 30th of this year. For comparison purposes, we also released the crime stats for the previous five years across the same six-month period. I would like to take a moment to break down this report and provide some clarification to the FBI category headings and how these numbers translate into actual criminal acts within the city. Starting with the UCR category of rape, which includes reported crimes with a nexus to sexual activity. The 2021 semi-annual report indicates that four such incidents occurred between the six-month period. None of these incidents include forcible sexual assault in which a person was held against their will. What you are seeing in this report are incidents that were reported to us in the first half of 2021 that actually occurred in prior years. These incidents are collectively part of a larger investigation that resulted from an arrest last month by our juvenile unit. Unfortunately, I cannot go into further detail, but I can say that all four cases are related to one investigation. It is important to reiterate that none of these incidents involved an actor wandering about the city and sexually assaulting another. The UCR category of assaults includes incidents of both aggravated assault, which is the unlawful attack by one person on another for the purpose of inflicting severe or aggravated bodily injury. These types of assaults usually are accompanied by the use of a weapon and cause great bodily injury or harm. This category also includes simple and attempted assaults where no weapon is utilized nor serious or aggravated injury results to the victim. Some examples include stalking, intimidation, coercion, and hate easy. The 2021 semi-annual report indicates 33 incidents in this category type. It does not include any incidents of aggravated assault. Of the reported cases, 36% involve incidents that were reported by a medical facility in town. These incidents involve patients reporting an assault upon arrival to the hospital, patients seeking mental health treatment, or patients undergoing substance abuse treatment. Less than 1% of these cases involve parties who are unknown to one another and stem from a verbal altercation. The remaining cases involve disputes and minor altercations between no parties, with the majority being within the same household. It is important to reiterate that of these 33 cases that have been reported, none involved a person randomly assaulting another on a city street. The UCR category of larceny includes the unlawful taking or attempted taking of personal property of another. Examples include the actual or attempted theft of cell phones, currency, bicycles, motor vehicle parts, license plate, and shoplifting to neighbor field. The 2021 semi-annual report depicts over 50% of these larcenies involving entry to unlocked motor vehicles. The UCR category of burglary includes the unlawful entry to a structure, vehicle, or vessel with the intent to commit a crime or the attempt, or, excuse me, and attempts are also included in this category. The 2021 report, semi-annual report, includes the unlawful entry and theft to a home on Waldron Avenue, as well as incidents of unlawful entry to motor vehicles, attempted entries, and vandalism to a commercial storefront. With regard to motor vehicle theft, the 2021 semi-annual report reflects a total of six vehicles having been stolen, three of which have been from residential neighborhoods. The remaining reports stem from reports taken from local car dealerships when reconciling their inventory. Those vehicles, on occasion, are eventually located, but a stolen vehicle report is taken until proven otherwise. Although not part of the 2021 semi-annual report, I would like to note that this month we received two additional reports of vehicles that were stolen from residential neighborhoods. In all of these residential cases, the vehicles were once again unlocked with the keys inside. It is also important to note that we had also received this month video of an attempted theft or entry to a motor vehicle. In this case, the vehicle was locked and the actor vacated the property. I would like to take a moment to thank the public for their vigilance in ensuring their vehicles, homes, and property remain secure. This is the best form of deterrence to criminal activity. Motor vehicle theft has not subsided in the region, the state, or the country, and despite the five thefts that have occurred, I believe the residents of Summit are doing their part. We, of course, need to remain vigilant and remember to keep locking up our vehicles, our homes, and securing our valuables at the same site. Likewise, I would also like to thank the members of council for assisting us in sharing our messaging of remaining vigil in this report. I do believe it is helpful. Much of what we do in the form of messaging could not be accomplished without the dedicated team of the city's Public Information Office. I would like to also recognize them for their tireless work in collaborating with the police administration in delivering timely and accurate information to the public. Over the last several months, they have been instrumental in pioneering new methods of communication, such as our What You Need to Know series and our monthly Traffic Safety Lastly, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the women and men of the Summit Police Department, who have been working tirelessly since March of last year to keep this city safe. I have witnessed tremendous acts of courage, strength, and heroism, on top of personal sacrifices, individual loss, and heartbreak. Through it all, they have not lost their resolve in service to the city. For this, I cannot be proud enough to serve them as their chief. Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight in regards to this report.
Thank you very much, Chief. This was very, very helpful. I'm going to open this up for questions from members of council first, if anyone has any questions for the Chief. Councilmember Naido?
Thank you very much, Council President. Chief, first of all, I think, I speak for all of us certainly here, saying that we hope that you get better, and you get better soon. Thank you for joining us, even while it's clear that you're struggling with your breath. I don't want to take too much time. I do want a few, I have a clarification or a question for a clarification. So I was trying to understand, when you spoke about larceny, larceny, burglary, and motor vehicle thefts. So let me give you a hypothetical so I can understand. So let's assume that a car is stolen because the key fob is in there, the thief comes, takes the car, but the person also leaves their cellphone in there, and they leave, let's say, tennis gear. Is that just recorded as one motor vehicle theft? Or is it one motor vehicle theft, one act of larceny, one act of burglary? How is that reported in your statistics?
That's a great question, Councilman. Let's make the assumption in that scenario that the owner of all the property is the same person?
Correct.
The way that UCR categorizes things is based upon the highest dollar value or the highest level of crime. So in this particular scenario that you gave, it would be classified as a motor vehicle theft regardless of the items that were stolen within. In the event that the items in the vehicle belong to another person, it would be treated as two separate incidents, one for a motor vehicle theft, the other for the person affording.
Got it. Thank you. The other question that I had, and I wanted to thank you for the transparency, and certainly with the clarification and information you gave today, I think it's very helpful to the public to understand, you know, how safe we are and how the statistics really are very limited in nature. But, you know, I've been here on council for six years, and usually we have a summary of political, I mean, police activities, like in the late fall, my recollection, right? We have it in October or November. We usually don't have it in July. So is this something that's new, or has this been going on for some time, the summary annual reports?
As I mentioned previously, there is no state mandate that requires the public reporting in this format at this point in the year. Typically, this uniform crime report is prepared for year-end and has been part of the city's overall annual report year-to-year. In doing our comprehensive review, this administration has looked for ways to share information with the public on a more regular basis, and we do that through a number of different vehicles, like I mentioned, our What You Need to Know series, which pushes out information that the police department feels is important to the public, predominantly related to crime ahead of what we would normally put in our monthly police plot. And the decision-making behind releasing this information at this point in juncture is, again, to be fully transparent with the public in what is happening within the city, and really to ensure the public that the city is safe, and the officers that are out there day and night are doing their part every day to keep this city safe. And despite some of these numbers that may appear alarming, when we dive a little deeper into where they're actually being generated from, and the fact that, as I pointed out, in our rape category, assault category, we do not have people running around the city committing these crimes. These are isolated incidents in terms of the rape category, and we wanted to make sure that the public was aware of what is truly happening.
Thank you, Chief. I think it's always important to have context for numbers and that it be put in the proper context so that it's not necessary to get unnecessarily alarmed about things that are not happening. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Allen, did you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Thanks, Chief, for speaking tonight. I hope you have a speedy recovery, and I do want to thank our police for the excellent job that they do in keeping our community safe. One question I had was, and I apologize, I was busy taking notes and I don't have the report in front of me. I was just curious, did you mention the attempted abduction? Where that falls into this report? That would be my first question. And just secondarily, if someone, because this happened, if someone is to sneak into a house and rustles around the house, I guess this would be kind of to David's question, and steals the keys to the car, which, in the hierarchy, do they end up getting charged for? Thank you.
Yeah. Councilwoman Allen, I apologize. The first part of your question, there was a tremendous echo, so if somebody closer to the screen could rewrite that for me, but I did hear the second question, so I'll answer that first. In that particular scenario, we would have a burglar tour residence to commit a crime therein. In this case, it was the theft of the vehicle. So if somebody were to come into the house, I'll give you another scenario, if somebody were to come into an open garage and take a vehicle, that could get classified as a burglary, it could get classified as a motor vehicle, and it's really dependent upon the full circumstances of the case and the evidence that is recovered during the investigation. So there is no hard and fast rule on that. It's all totality of the circumstances at hand. As to the first question, again, I apologize with the echo, if somebody could relay that out.
So Chief, Lisa's question was, where in the categorization does the abduction that happened earlier this year, where would that fall?
Yes, believe it or not, abduction is such a rare reported incident in the uniform crime report that it doesn't even fall into a category such as this because it is so rare, but we do have that one on our books as well.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other questions from members of council? So I'm going to open it up quickly to members of the public, but I would ask you, I think our chief is flagging a little bit, so if we can sort of, anything that we can't address tonight, we can get back to you on. But if you have a question, come on up and ask. Okay? No takers? All right. So Chief, we're going to let you go get some rest, and we wish you a speedy recovery, and we appreciate you coming here tonight to, you know, on the screen to talk to us and explain this context. It was very helpful. So feel better.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you all for the low issues.
Okay. Take care.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. So with that, we can take any other questions as part of public comment, and anything for the chief, we'll take down the questions and then we'll get them back to you. So at this point, I'm going to open the public comment period, and members of the public can comment on anything that is not on the agenda. And I'm going to ask you to stay, to stick to three minutes, and we're going to collect all the questions, and then we'll address them afterwards. So come on up, ask your questions, and then have a seat, and then we'll try to address them all at the same time. So. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Fox, Ms. Lee Raddus, and council members. My name is Laura Soden. I'm at 48 Madison Avenue. And I just came to make a comment because I read on Summit Happenings that a neighbor of mine on Lafayette was talking about rats in his yard. And my very next-door neighbor had a rat that was dying in his yard the other day. Put it out of its misery, as he termed it. And I, my house is directly adjacent to Bristol Myers Squibb. And so since 2018, but the September of 2019, I have had Humphreys at my house every two weeks because I had rats in my yard. I had initially 12 bait boxes. Now I'm down to seven, but every time Humphreys comes, the baits are eaten. There have been no rats visible in the yard. When we started it, the rats were visible in the yard in the daylight. And again, we felt that it was from the demolition of the buildings. And so that's the past, but the rats still are around. And my concern is that in our neighborhood, they seem to be increasing. We have a lot of new children, new families in the neighborhood, babies that play in the yard. And so I just, I don't have an answer. My concern is that someone wrote on Summit Happenings, you know, if you have food, if you have construction, you're going to have rats, you know? And I thought, well, is this the new norm? I mean, I know we have rats. Rats are going to be with us. We're never going to exterminate all the rats. But should we be looking to see, we can call the population, like they do with the bear and the deer, you know, and keep them down, keep them abey? I mean, they do carry disease, and I just, I just didn't want them in my house, and they were getting very close to my house. The holes were getting quite close to my foundation, so, and I still have them come. And so I just wanted to raise the flag, and I know you all are aware, but, and the other concern, before I forget, is that, and I know they're going to, Bristol Myers Squibb is going to build on that lot where they took down the buildings. And so when they do that, we will start that cycle all over again. Plus, right now, I think Morris Avenue may have an impact on what's going on as well with their construction there. And that's all I have to say. I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, thank you. So we'll address all the comments afterwards. So thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
I'm just going to go. You can cover that. That's yours.
All right. Anyone else have a comment? All right, I'm going to close. We had nothing from emails, correct? Okay. So I'm going to close the comment period. And...
Madam Mayor, I'm going to let you talk about rats.
Yeah, we didn't catch your name.
Laura Soden.
Okay, sorry. It was just hard to hear, so.
Sorry, we've got this wonderful air conditioning system that's, I know. So I'm going to speak...
Cooler than last week.
I'm going to use...
Can he hear you guys?
I'm going to use my mom voice.
I'm going to try to...
You want to do that? Because then I can also, because we talked about this in last year with, oh, no, you're going to do this.
I'm trying to set this off again, but it's...
All right. So Laura, we had, there were a couple different locations in town in the last year and a half to two years where we had some rat problems, by Fairview and Springfield Avenue, down on Glenn Side, Ashwood. You know, you're right, you're never going to get rid of rats, and it has to do with, oh, there we go. It has to do with, obviously, sometimes it's construction, sometimes it's food. So I will definitely, we'll talk, I'll talk to Aaron, and we'll have, you know, our inspectors will go down, but have you reached out to the Health Department?
I did not reach out to the Health Department because I was interacting with cell phones.
Okay.
We look forward to it.
Sure.
They also, I didn't say, in New Jersey, they have bait boxes around their properties too.
Right.
However, I also got to say, I never see anybody attending that, so.
Okay.
I mean, they're not, but I'm just saying.
No, I understand. So we'll reach out to the Health Inspector because he was very helpful, at least according to the residents that I heard back from after he had spoken with them, talking, going to their homes, visiting, giving them ideas of what they could do, and then going back and do extra, you know, extra visits.
So my job here of all my work, either my job though, I take out in the yard on a leash because I don't want to buy bait boxes because it's...
Of course.
...in which will...
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. So we'll talk with the Health Department, I'm blanking, not Leon.
Can I just add, sorry, because it's, because I don't know if it was...
You look like Santa Claus with the...
I don't know if it was...
I don't know if it was, I don't know who posted on Summit NJ Happenings, but I saw Jonathan, and I won't say the last name because I don't know if it's the same person, but Jonathan posted on another private group about the rats on Lafayette, right? And so I contacted the Westfield Health Department because when he, I saw his post. And so Laura, I can tell them about yours as well, because I was already communicating with them about Jonathan's situation, and they needed his phone number. So if you could give me your phone number, I'll give it to them. And then I'll tell them that to add you to the list.
Right. Thank you very much, Deputy Clerk. George Cornelius is the Health Inspector. So we'll be in touch. And could you, could you give me your email address?
Yep. L.
Yep.
S O D M.
Yep.
Or A at gmail dot com.
Okay. We'll be in touch. Okay. So now moving on, we are on to ordinances for hearing. So, Madam Clerk, could you please read the first ordinance for hearing, which is a safety ordinance?
Don't mind them. They can breathe.
Yep.
An ordinance to amend the code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Seven, Administrative Policies and Procedures, Section Two dash sixty-nine, Fees for Municipal Service, Subsection Two dash sixty-nine point three, Fees to be collected by Chief of Police.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Hairston, could you please introduce this ordinance?
Yes, I am introducing ordinance twenty-one, three, two, four, one, that is amending the fees. And we discussed this at the last council meeting, where we are changing the hourly rate for police coverage. We find that our current rate to be out of step with neighboring communities in an effort to maintain parity and preserve our ability to contract police officers as necessary for certain events at our schools, primarily the high school and middle school. The Board of Education reached out to us, and we're raising the hourly rate to fifty dollars per hour effective immediately. And this will ensure all of our Summit officers are aware of the new rate. And I introduce this ordinance for passing.
I second that.
Okay. So it's opening the hearing. Does anyone from council have any comments on this matter? Any comments from members of the public? Okay. So I'm going to close the hearing, and we'll move on to the second ordinance for hearing, Finance Ordinance, two-one, three-two, four-two, please.
No problem. Bond Ordinance appropriating four million thirty thousand and authorizing the issuance of three million eight hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance, this is a bond ordinance that does two things. First, it appropriates funds for the capital project plan. And second, it authorizes the issuance of bonds in support of that plan in the amount of three million eight hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Projects in this year's capital budget plan include, but are not limited to, improvements to the paddle tennis courts at Wilson Park, upgrade to the electrical ventilation and HVAC systems at City Hall, acquisition of police and fire vehicles, improving, improvement of the stormwater drainage system, road paving, curbing, and sidewalk and pedestrian safety improvements on Park Avenue, Michigan Avenue, Tulip Street, Henry Street, Risc Ave, and Park Place. I know it'll come as a big shock to everyone here, but I have three things to say about this. So, one, this represents a balance between the need to invest in our infrastructure and the need to keep our debt under control. As a matter of fact, this is the lowest capital budget in the last decade. Second, every project that comes before council has merit, but we don't consider these things in a vacuum. We have to look at the bigger picture and make the difficult choices to prioritize the projects that are most important. Third, part of that bigger picture, of course, is the firehouse project. This has to get done, and we'll be introducing that bond ordinance later. The last few years of thoughtful, careful, and deliberate investment has led us to where we are today. So with that, I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second that.
Okay. I'm going to declare the hearing open. Are there any comments from members of council? Okay. Any comments from members of the public? Okay. Last chance. I'm going to close the hearing, and we'll move on to the second finance ordinance, the bond ordinance. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two forty-three, Bond Ordinance appropriating five hundred and forty thousand and authorizing the issuance of five hundred and forty thousand dollars bonds or notes of the city for various sewer utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey.
Okay. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. So this is the bond ordinance appropriating five hundred and forty thousand dollars and issuing bonds for the same amount for sewer utility improvements. I would like to note, in virtually every other year, there has been another ordinance after this to appropriate funds for the parking utility. We don't have such an ordinance this year because there will be no such projects this year. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second that.
Okay. Are there any comments from members of council on this ordinance? Comments from members of the public? Okay. So hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing, and we'll move on to the third finance ordinance. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two forty-four, Bond Ordinance providing for the improvement of the sewerage facilities owned by the members of the Joint Meeting of Essex and Union Counties, appropriating nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar bond or notes of said City of Summit for financing its share of the cost of such improvement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And nicely done in shortening that list.
Oh, no problem. Rosemary gave me a heads up.
Yep. Councilmember Vartan.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. So this is the bond ordinance appropriating nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars and authorizing issuance of bonds for the same amount for the city's portion of the joint meeting improvements. So as a reminder, the joint meeting is the city's Waste Treatment and Disposal Center. To quote the website, in the eighteen nineties, R.S. Sinclair of South Orange wrote letters to surrounding communities asking for a joint meeting to discuss methods of cooperative disposal of sewage. This is one of the state's oldest examples of a shared service. Summit is responsible for eight point nine one percent of the joint meeting's budget and capital projects on a three-year rotation. This is one such year. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second it.
Okay. The hearing is open. Does anyone have any questions or comments on council? Councilmember Little.
I just wanted to reiterate this. It's, the joint meetings are really impressive venture, and no one thinks about sewage until you, you know, no one wants to think about sewage. No one needs to think about sewage. No one really, you know, it's the, it's a thing that we need very much to make sure it works well and is taken care of. And this is just an excellent example of shared services and how they work well. This is one of the oldest, as Councilmember Vartan said, shared service agreements in the state, maybe even further than that. And we could not possibly do this within the City of Summit for this, for this cost. Even though this amount seems large, it is shared among all these towns, and it is necessary to the healthy and pleasant functioning that, of life in the city. So this is, it's really, it's really a remarkable venture that we take part in, and I would happily support that.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none. I'm going to close this hearing, and we'll now move on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two forty-one, An Ordinance to amend the Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Seven, Administrative Policies and Procedures, Section Two dash sixty-nine, Fees for Municipal Service, Subsection Two dash sixty-nine point three, Fees to be collected by Chief of Police.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. And I apologize for saying that this was discussed at the last council meeting because I was getting it confused with our Safety Committee meeting. So as I described in the earlier part of this meeting, this ordinance is to amend the code of the policies and procedures for fees for municipal service subsection to be collected by the Chief of Police and to get our fees in line with other municipalities.
So you move.
I move to have this.
Move for final consideration.
For final consideration.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and we'll move on to the second ordinance for final consideration.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two forty-two, Bond Ordinance appropriating four million thirty thousand and authorizing the issuance of three million eight hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is the bond ordinance for capital improvements. Having just closed the hearing a few moments ago, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to finance, the second finance ordinance, please. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two forty-three, Bond Ordinance appropriating five hundred and forty thousand dollars and authorizing the issuance of five hundred and forty thousand dollars bonds or notes of the city for various sewer utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is the bond ordinance for the sewer utility improvements. Having closed the hearing a moment ago, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. And we have one last finance ordinance.
All right. Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two forty-four, Bond Ordinance providing for the improvement of the sewerage facilities owned by the members of the Joint Meeting of Essex and Union Counties, appropriating nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the said City of Summit for financing its share of the costs of such improvement.
Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is the bond ordinance for the joint meetings improvements. Having closed the hearing a moment ago, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
And President Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're on to ordinances for introduction. And our first one is Finance Ordinance. Councilmember Vartan. Oh, yes.
Do we need to read it?
Madam Clerk, you have to read it first.
ID number eight thousand, Bond Ordinance providing for the construction of a new firehouse and by the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating sixteen million one hundred thousand dollars, therefore and authorizing the issuance of fifteen million three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the city for financing such appropriation.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. As was read, this is the bond ordinance for the new firehouse. I will have a lot more to say on it when we have the hearing at our council meeting on Wednesday, September first, 2021. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Second.
Okay. So we need a roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have one last, the Safety and Health Ordinance for introduction.
ID number eight thousand fifteen, An Ordinance amending the code, Chapter Seven, Traffic, Section Seven dash eight point seven, Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I am introducing this ordinance, number ID eight oh fifteen, to amend the code for parking prohibited at all times. Do I discuss what it's about now?
Yes.
Okay. So this, the city has improved a section of Pine Grove Avenue between Blackburn Road and Ashland Road with curbing sidewalks and new paving. This update has created a shrinking of road width sufficient enough to create new parking challenges. The roadway was in full operation after the construction process for a short time when the police department began to receive complaints about parking. The Traffic Bureau observed that with parking on one side of the roadway between Manor Hill and Colony Drive, there was a significant sightline problem. Vehicles parked created a one-lane pass with two lanes of opposing traffic. This, along with the sightline issue, created a problem. The police department erected emergency no parking anytime signs in the subject area, and it allowed traffic to safely flow from Ashland to Blackburn Road. The new ordinance would prohibit parking on both sides of Pine Grove Avenue between Colony Drive and Manor Hill Road, and this will make the area safer for vehicular travel in both directions. So I move to introduce ordinance eight oh one five for hearing.
I second.
Okay. Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we're on to resolutions. So our first resolution is Safety and Health, number one. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. And I am introducing the Resolution eight oh three five to rescind Resolution three three five to rescind Resolution three nine seven seven and reauthorize submission to the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for the body worn camera grant application and execute grant agreement. And, uh, this resolution is pro forma, uh, as the rules changed, uh, for, um, how this application for body camera, uh, is submitted. And so this is just to, uh, make a correction to the application that we already, um, submitted, and we will be getting the monies, and this was just to, um, cor- make a correction. So I move this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, the second Safety and Health, uh, resolution, um, we are going, we're going to push till the next meeting on September first, uh, because our new police officer hired does not have the background check information done in time for this vote. So we'll move on to, uh, Safety and Health, number three. Councilmember Hairston?
Yes, uh, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution eight zero two zero to declare a vacancy in the Fire Department. Um, and this was pending our closed session discussion, and I feel bad that I'm not able to pull up the, um, memo about this because this is someone near and dear to my heart, uh, Don Nelson. Um, uh, a classmate of mine is, uh, retiring, and, uh, after thirty-six years of, uh, outstanding service, uh, got to know him as Chair of the, uh, Emergency Management, and so we are declaring a vacancy. Um, but I do not want to do him disservice, so, and I, because I can't find the details. May I, um, through you, uh, Council President, just allow the, um, Chief to say anything?
Sure. Chief, I presume you can come on up?
Deputy Chief Nelson, been a part of the Summit Fire Department for over, uh, thirty-eight years. He volunteered for a few years. He's retiring, uh, after thirty-six years of service. He also serves as the Emergency Management Coordinator, been a great asset to the department. So the resolution for tonight is to declare vacancy for his position and also to subsume positions from firefighter lieutenant battalion chief from deputy's position. So, uh, those lifts are already in place, so it will be authorized, um, promotion for, uh, Deputy Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And, um, so I think we need a second before we forget.
I will second.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so are there any, uh, comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? So we will, uh, we wish, uh, Deputy Chief Nelson, um, a wonderful retirement. We thank him for his service, and we'll see him before he goes, so this isn't goodbye. But anyway, um, with that, I'll, uh, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're moving on now to, um, Capital Projects, uh, number one. Councilmember Little?
Council President, I'm gonna refuse myself in the...
Uh, for the which one?
Number one.
Number one.
The first one.
Oh, West End, 'cause you live on West End. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Do I need to wait till he leaves or no?
Um...
Yeah, just in case.
Yeah. Wait till he leaves. I mean, you can introduce it, I guess, while he's here.
Okay.
Uh, Capital Projects Resolution number one is number seven nine seven six, and this is to award a bid for the West End Avenue Improvement Project. Um, uh, the bids were opened last Tuesday, and the low bidder was Revax Contracting Corporation in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. This bid was below the estimate, and Revax has worked for the city, um, before, had done great work, most recently on the Springfield Avenue Improvement Project, um, under the Transit Bridge at the end of Springfield Avenue. So this project will include the milling and paving of the entire length of West End Avenue, including the repair of storm inlets and repair of damaged curbing, and will also include work done on Dunder Drive. So this, uh, I will also note that this project is partially funded by a municipal aid grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. So I ask that we approve this resolution. And I need a second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay. I forgot.
My second partner just left the room.
Right, okay, so, um, are there any comments from members of council? I have one question. Um, is this in closed sidewalks or no?
Um, I don't think there are sidewalks in this project.
No.
No, it wasn't part of our sidewalk master plan.
Okay.
Uh, this project we've worked on for quite a long time. If, if you're familiar with the area, there's a section of West End Avenue that is, that is, um, that does not have curbing, and it's, it's less improved, and then, so we had to work on the, the, the design and the, of that project. So this is, this project has been one that we've been working on for quite a while, and I'm sure, um, Councilmember Naidoo and his neighbors will be very happy to see it coming into, uh, into being, so.
And that end also includes, um, includes drain, a lot of drainage, right?
Yes, so that's, that's the work that I discussed, um, repairing the storm inlets and repairing and installing curving, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Little.
It will be a, it will be a wonderful improvement to that area.
Are there any other questions?
I just had one, yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
This is the whole length of West End, the other side that goes into the Providence Road, I believe?
Yep.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, any other questions from council? Questions from members of the public? Okay, um, so I'm, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Come back. All right, so, uh, you can go ahead with, um, Capital Projects, number two.
Uh, thank you, Council President. The Capital Projects Resolution two is number eight zero two four, and this is to award bid for the sewer jet building concrete work. Um, these bids were also open last Tuesday, and the low bidder was CMS Construction in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This again was below the estimate, and CMS also has, uh, done work for the city in the past, um, that was, that we were quite happy with. So this includes construction of the concrete walls and slab for a new storage garage that will house the sewer utility sewer jet truck. As we stated earlier, the sewers are something that we don't like to think about, but we may want to make sure are working properly, and so, um, making sure that we have all the equipment, then it's stored properly is, is very important. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, on to Capital Projects, number three?
Thank you. Capital Projects, number three, is to appoint an affordable housing administrative agent. Um, this is number seven nine eight zero. Um, it, in the past, uh, the Housing Authority for the City of Summit was the administrative agent that was responsible for administering the Summit's Affordable Housing Program. As we've discussed, we've had a change in leadership, um, and the Executive Director of the Summit Housing Authority. The new director didn't feel that, uh, he, he wanted to concentrate on the Summit Housing Authority and didn't feel that he could do, he could or should do both of these, um, jobs under, with, uh, under this position. So we are looking to separate the, the two and appoint, um, in contract with someone to be our administrative agent to administer the housing program. Several of us met with, um, Mark Leckington, who is the President of Leckington Associates. He has done a great deal of work in this field. He had impeccable credentials. He was able to talk with us and answer all of our questions, and had a great plan for, um, improving the customer service, improving the access and the, um, in the ways of applying for affordable housing, and for, um, overseeing and making sure to do an annual audit of all of our affordable housing to make sure that we had qualified, um, renters and residents in, in those units. So I think it's gonna mean, um, that we have an improvement in this, in this area, uh, across the board. So I would ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So there are a few different types of affordable housing in Summit. There's Housing Authority, which is HUD subsidized. There's Affordable Housing managed by nonprofit organizations that was built, uh, decades ago. Uh, and then there's the affordable housing built by the city and developers as part of the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing. So how that affordable housing is marketed, establishing a list of qualified tenants and performing the necessary administrative functions fall largely on this administrative agent. So for the past several years, about eight or more, uh, the administrative function was run by the leadership of the Housing Authority. Uh, the parameters and requirements are different, but the processes are similar. So now that we have new leadership at the Housing Authority, this is an opportune time to separate out that function, uh, and bring in a professional contractor who is an expert in this field. Uh, after having a conversation with Mark Leckington, I feel very confident that he knows how this process works. He actually wrote a book on it, uh, that he will make the process of applying simple and easy, and that he will be a good representative to Summit, to those seeking to live here. Uh, this change comes just in time for affordable housing to come online on Summit Avenue, uh, and for construction to begin shortly, I think in September, on the Habitat Project as well. So I'm very excited about this, uh, and though we're only required to hold one Affordable Housing Committee meeting per year that typically takes place in February, we will be holding another so that we can update that group on some of these important changes and others in September or October. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Um, Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I want to, uh, echo, uh, Councilmember Little and Council Vartan's, uh, comments about how, uh, impressed, uh, I was with Mark, um, what, um, we know that Summit is a well, uh, sought-after community, and we have taken pride in our affordable housing, and, uh, how it has been, um, uh, managed, uh, can now reflect the intentions of our city and making sure that our, uh, residents who have been a long time here are considered, and, uh, we, uh, know that it's not gonna be just an online process that will be at the grab of anyone. And so I wanted to, um, especially thank, um, Matt, uh, for being so thorough in his, um, review of what's going on. Our Housing Authority, uh, person Keith, uh, I know they've had lots of conversation, and the committee, uh, that, um, we're on affordable housing. It's, uh, just a pleasure to hear how thoughtfully this is being carried out, and so I just wanna echo, uh, our two councilmen's, uh, endorsement of this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Anyone else? Does that mean Councilmember Owen?
Thank you, Council President. Quick question, um, actually two quick questions. You mentioned that it go, it's gonna create an online process, so it sounds as though that is not common. Are we, my question would be, is this, are we going to be a standout from a municipality standpoint, that we will have an online process where people apply? Um, and two, you look confused, so I'm hoping, okay. And number two, um, do we give preference to our Summit residents? Like, how would, how does that process work?
I think I can, I think I can, yeah. So, um, I think to the first question on the online process, I think it's a question better, uh, directed to Mark, and that we can come back with it, but, um, I think basically this has to become official first, and then he'll let us know how the, exactly how the process will run. Um, I think there's gonna be a number of avenues. There's gonna be an online platform, uh, printable, you know, forms that can be, that can be filled out, um, so that it's accessible for most people. Um, and then I think, uh, to the second question, um, what was the second question?
Oh, of course, no, that's fine. I was just curious.
Oh, oh, that's, the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority can, uh, give preference to Summit residents. Um, my understanding is that the housing, the affordable housing, uh, the, the other affordable housing cannot be, we cannot give preference to Summit residents.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's, that's covered by federal and state law?
Yes, yeah.
Not, not decisions that are made here in Summit?
Correct.
But I do wanna, if I can just respond, because that was my concern as well, and what, I do hope we can get him to come at some time and talk, because it, or people should attend the meeting that, uh, we'll be having about it. But what he described is he, that is a, a means of collection. He has several means of collection that, um, as I, as I said, what I liked about it, it is intentional, and, uh, it, it will be, um, not only, and, uh, I know it's not the, um, it is similar to other municipalities, but I, I, I appreciate your asking that really good question, uh, because we know how online we've, uh, we have our people who are just expert at it and know how to game the system, and he assured us that this is a very thoughtful process, and the values that Summit holds, uh, near and dear, can be incorporated legally and in a fair way.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Um, are there any other comments or questions from council members? Anything from the public?
Good evening. Steve Spur, uh, sixty-one Woodman Avenue. Uh, through you, Council President, welcome Nicole this evening. It's wonderful to have her. Um, but just to, there's a quick question and a comment. Um, thank you very much, Greg, for the good distillation of the types of affordable housing. That was helpful. Do you know how much in each of those categories we have? And I don't mean to quiz you, we can certainly connect. We can certainly connect afterwards.
Yeah, I think that's, this should, you, you don't ask questions to individual councilmembers.
Through you, Council President, if it's possible to have
Right.
A member of council or a member of the city administration, uh, to provide a summary of the number of, uh, portable housing units in those different categories. That would be wonderful. And then a question is also, how will oversight be conducted, um, now that this administrative function is moving, moving slightly in a different form outside of the Summit Housing Authority? So, those are my two questions for you.
Okay, thank you. So does anyone have an answer to those questions, or is this, uh, the numbers we probably should get back to him on, 'cause that's not something we know offhand, oversight?
Yes, uh, our affordable housing liaison for the city is Matt Delory, and he's not present here, so, I mean, he has spreadsheets and all the data correctly. I don't want to mis, misstate anything. Um, the Housing Authority is, covers the three, um, housing developments here in Summit, and they're, you know, they're all roughly around the hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty units each, roughly, but that's, that's a rough estimate. Um, and then we have a number of how, you know, affordable housing units that are administered. The oversight, I mean, there, the oversight portion is that he will be reporting with, you know, the administrative agent will be providing reports to the city, um, and doing audits of, of the affordable housing units, who's living in them, and making sure that the residents are qualified residents to be living in affordable housing units. So I think the oversight will actually improve with this, um, with this new administration. So that was one of the things that we were concerned hadn't been, you know, up to the sta, you know, maybe up to the standards that we expect in the past, and, and one of the things that we really wanted to improve. So we are looking forward to that.
Okay, so, um, any other comments from members of the public? All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Capital Projects, number four.
Thank you, Council President. Um, Resolution number four is number eight zero one three, and this is to authorize submission and execution of the twenty-twenty-one greening Union County Grant Application. Um, we received this application through the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. This is a matching grant, um, where the county will match tree-for-tree planting, including supplies and plantings. Um, so we've applied and participated in this grant initiative for the past several years, and it's been incredibly valued to us in our tree planting program. Um, this grant process, we are recommending to plant seventy-five trees in both the spring and the fall, so if we are successful again with this grant, uh, that would cover fifty percent of the cost of the trees and the installation. So I ask that we approve this resolution to apply for this grant.
Councilmember Naidoo?
Uh, seconded.
All right, are there any comments from members of council?
I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Owen.
Do we have the ability to say where the trees go or not? The only reason I'm asking this, 'cause it's with the JCPN L stuff that has been going on, I'm just curious, as we plant trees, do we have the capacity to say, do not plant them under wires?
Yes, um, um...
I'm sorry, Council, through you, Council President.
Yes, um, so our, for ourster, John Lyson, um, works with, he identifies the sites. He works with JCPN L. They also select trees that are, um, small enough that they don't, you know, there's certain trees that are, that JCPN L has on their list of trees that are good to be near wires. And so anything that's near a wire, they choose the trees off that list, so that it, we're very intentional about trees near wires. We're not creating more problems. So, um, any other questions or comments? Any comments from members of the public? Yes, go ahead.
I, I'd just like to point out that, um, there are residents who actually want trees.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes they don't know that they can ask for a city tree, and you can do so if you want a tree, and, uh, and there's actually a selection of trees from which you can choose, uh, that you could have planted. So there, you know, I've run into folks who will stop me and say, can you get a city tree? And it's like, absolutely, just contact, uh, the, through the city's, uh, system, you can ask for a tree, and then we'll try to, uh, accommodate your request.
So Department of Community Services, correct, Mr. Schrager?
Yep.
Okay, um, any other comments? All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, so moving on to, uh, Capital Projects, number five?
Thank you, Council President. Would it be, um, I'll write with you, by bundle, number five and number six?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you. Then I will, um, be, uh, introducing Resolution number five, which is number eight zero one seven, and number six, which is number eight zero two eight, and this is to authorize the use of the Maple Street Road closure by Home Power Yoga and by Robot Revolution. These two, um, businesses here in Summit have asked if they can, um, use that portion of Maple Street, which we have authorized for closure in order to conduct some outside business, and this would allow them to do so. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Um, I, I think this is a great idea, particularly, I know that Robot Revolution was concerned last year about sort of access to their business, so I'm glad that they're going to be able to make use of this space as well. So I think, you know, it's been, the closure of Maple Street has been a great success in the community. We've gotten a lot of very public comments about it, uh, very positive public comments about it, people saying that they're, you know, that they really think it makes the town very festive, and it, it sort of adds to a really nice atmosphere. So, um, it, it does, you know, it does affect some of the businesses on Maple Street, so, you know, when we can make something like this happen where everyone benefits, I think it's great. So, um, I really support this. Um, are there any other comments?
I would just, I would just add that, um, it's my understanding that both businesses contacted the restaurants, and they were also very... the restaurants, and they were also very much in favor of allowing this use and welcomed it. So, you know, it's nice, it's nice to see everyone working together and using this wonderful outdoor space, so I also am very much in favor of this.
That's wonderful. Councilmember Allen, did you have a question?
I did, Council President. Thank you. I was just curious if we know why the final date for Robot Revolution was August 27th, if I got that right. I was just curious if there was a reason, it was shorter than November.
I think they have a camp.
Yeah, I think that's just what they requested.
I think it's just when their summer camp is, correct? Yes. It's summer camp. Okay. Are there any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So would you like to go ahead with Capitol Project number seven?
Thank you, Council President. Capitol Project number seven is number 8011, and this is to declare a vacancy in the DPW. This is a vacancy that arose from the very untimely passing of Ryan McGovern, which we talked about last year. And I have to say, no one will be able to fill Ryan's footsteps or his space within DPW, but we are going to declare this vacancy to fill his actual position. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Capitol Projects number eight.
Thank you. Capitol Projects number eight is number 8041, and this is to appoint a Recycling Advisory Committee member. This is to fill the position of a Boy Scout on the Recycling Advisory Committee. We are losing an excellent member of the committee in Marcus Goken. He is a Summit High School student. He's been a great addition to the committee. He's really put together a lot of great projects, worked really hard, and everyone's going to miss him tremendously. The committee evaluated a couple of applications and looked and found someone who will be an excellent replacement in Adam Bowles, who is a local student and Boy Scout, and, you know, is really impressed the committee with his, both his experience and his poise in the interview process. So I don't know if Councilmember, after I introduce it, maybe Councilmember O'Sullivan wants to say a few words, but, because he sits on the committee, but I enthusiastically ask that we support this resolution.
I enthusiastically second it.
Councilmember O'Sullivan, did you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, Adam was very impressive in the interview process. We are looking forward to having him. It is a position that requires a bit of work on the student's behalf, so he has the temperament and the work ethic to help us get our mission accomplished. So we're looking forward to having him join us.
Thank you. The Recycling Advisory Committee is a sort of unique committee in this, in this community in that I think it may be the only committee that has students formally as part of the committee. And I was actually one of the people who was on the committee when it was started in 2005, so we've, we've seen some great people come through the committee, including former Councilmember Richard Sun. So this is like a proving ground for some really amazing students who then go on to do a lot of really great things. So it's, it's a great opportunity, it's also an opportu, it's also a position that requires students to be able to work with, you know, in a setting that's mostly adults. And so it's, it's a great experience for them. It's also, you know, having their energy is also a great experience for the members of the committee. So I thank Adam for volunteering. I thank Marcus Goken, who I had the pleasure of working with when I was the liaison to this committee, and he did an excellent job, and we wish him luck in college. So, did you have something?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So is the, the Boy Scouts are, have a seat on the council?
It's any scout.
Any scout.
It could be a girl scout or a boy scout.
Awesome.
It just happens, we've had, we've had girls in that position as well.
Awesome.
I think that was my, I misspoke, I believe, when I said the Boy Scout position, I should have said it was a scouting position. And I realized that after I spoke, I meant to correct it, and thank you for pointing that out, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Vartan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So we have hundreds of volunteers on our city boards and commissions. I think because students or young people are not formally included as required members on other boards, it does not mean they're not welcome. So if you are a young person who thinks that you can contribute to this city, you should apply, and we will most likely welcome you. So, thank you.
That's a very good point. Thank you, Councilmember Vartan.
Sure.
Any comments from members of the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we have a last-minute add-on resolution?
From the floor? Yes, I do.
Okay.
So this is a resolution I'm making from the floor, and this is to authorize the installation of a temporary dog park at the transfer station. And I'm going to just say I'm a tiny bit emotional about this resolution, so I'm going to do my very best to talk about it. But this project, we first started talking about when I first started campaigning back in 2017. At the time, I did a lot of canvassing door-to-door with Matt Gould, and we spent hundreds of hours together. And while walking, we often heard residents talk to us about a dog park and a request for a dog park, and this became Matt's passion project. Matt passionately advocated for us to have a dog park in Summit, and he brought it up at every meeting, and every, you know, caucus meeting we ever had, and almost every conversation I ever had with him. And so I'm sure he would be a little frustrated that it took this long, but I hope that Matt is proud of us tonight that we are introducing. I warned you, sorry. So I'm very happy to introduce this. We are going to be setting up a temporary dog park at the transfer station on the dates of August 19th through the 21st, August 26th through August 28th, and September 2nd through September 4th. We are going to, we have all the materials available to us through the Department of Community Services to do this, so it's not going to incur any costs on the part of the city. We are going to, we've thought it through, we've talked to a lot of people, we've done a lot of research about this, and we're going to set it up the best way that we know how, and then we're going to evaluate it and see how it goes, and see if we need to do any changes. Our hope is that this is incredibly successful, and that we can kind of roll this out and bring it to different neighborhoods, you know, in Summit as a, as a temporary measure if it goes well, and then eventually look at maybe doing a permanent dog park down the road. But I think this will be a wonderful project. I'm very happy to, to bring this resolution, and I hope Matt is proud of us tonight. And I ask that we approve this.
And I second it, and in seconding it, you know, when we got this from Aaron earlier this week, the dates that were actually picked for the first dog park, as many of us will remember, is around the date that Matt actually passed away two years ago. And it was, I think, right between the dates of the 19th and the 21st, actually, it was the 20th of August that we had his funeral. So I think it was incredible, because Aaron, I don't think had any idea when he picked these dates that that was what it was. But for, for me, when I saw that after the meeting, I was like, wow, what are the chances of that? So I too am very emotional about the fact that we're getting this done, so I enthusiastically second it.
Thank you. And any other comments from members of council? I'll second what Councilmembers Naidu and Little said. I was the third member of the team with Councilmember Little and Councilmember Gould, so I too discuss dog parks with them a lot. As another dog owner, we had a lot of discussions about it, so I'm pleased that we're doing this. I did want to clarify, I'm not sure that we are actually thinking at this point about bringing it to other neighborhoods. I think the-
This is the transfer station.
It's going to be at the transfer station by the, by the free market building, so there's parking there, it's out of the way, it's not in any neighborhood, which is, to my mind, a real plus, that it's, you know, no one's going to feel like their neighborhood's being taken over by dog park folks. It's going to be open during the hours of the transfer station, so it's not going to incur any extra staff time or anything like that. And we'll see how it goes, you know, we'll see how people, whether it's used, whether it's, people follow the rules, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to have rules about, you know, picking up dog waste, other things like that, and, you know, we'll see how it works, and we'll make a recommendation, or we'll receive a recommendation, actually, from Director Schreger at the end of this, about whether this is something that's doable as a permanent matter. And we will bring it here to council, and everyone will have an opportunity to comment as well. So, any other comments or questions? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Come on up.
Thank you. Andy Munigar, 15 Edgar Street, M-I-N-E-G-A-R. I just want to take a minute and express my support for this, the temporary dog park idea. I've been speaking with a lot of neighbors recently, and there is still a lot of support for that, so that's really great. I did not know Matt that well, but I'm guessing that he probably knew what I do about these, about dog parks, which is, they're, they're social gathering places for not just dogs, but for the owners, the people. So it's a, it's a dual-species park, for sure. I do have a question about the location. Was this location one of those that was considered in the past by the working group that was looking at dog park or baseball field?
Actually, yes. The Transfer Station Task Force did discuss that topic, and this was one, there were a couple of places that the Transfer Station Task Force had thought about. One is what's called the Old House Site, which is off of Passaic. The problem with that is there is no parking there. This site is good because there's parking, it's easily accessible, you don't have to come off Passaic Avenue to do it. So it's, it's the most logical site, it's a big open space with nothing really on it, so.
Great, thank you.
That was, that was the recommendation, actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, of the task force.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And tomorrow, I think there will be a press release going out, which will have details about the dog park, and so stay tuned. And now moving on to Community Programs and Parking Services. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 8023, to authorize the submission of the 2021 Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund Grant Application. The City of Summit's Department of Community Programs is applying for the 2021 Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund Grant, which we have successfully used for projects such as the just-completed track at Investors Field and the soon-to-be-renovated Memorial Basketball Courts. The Summit DCP intends to use this funding to enhance the paddle tennis courts at Wilson Park. These outdoor courts are used by the Summit DCP and Summit residents of all ages. The Department of Community Programs is requesting $75,000 from the 2021 Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund. This is a dollar-for-dollar grant, and this year, the city has budgeted $75,000 for the improvement of the paddle tennis courts at Wilson Field. The application requires a resolution from the City of Summit authorizing the submission of the grant application and the commitment to provide the matching funds. I enthusiastically ask that we approve this resolution.
I second. Sorry, Jim. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to the consent agenda, and unless anyone has anything they'd like to pull out of this, we'll take all of these matters as a whole. I would like to just comment quickly about the first item on the Capitol Projects Consent Agenda, which is the Hobart Avenue Sidewalk Project, which is, it's a bid advertisement, which we typically put in the consent agendas, but I just wanted to point out that this is to, to create sidewalks from Ridge Road to Reeves Reed Arboretum. And that has been a longtime wish of a lot of people who make use of Reeves Reed and want to walk there, and particularly, you know, when they have the Daffodil Festival and other events, I think there's a Fall Festival, too, and when they have a lot of people attending, there is definitely a safety issue associated with, you know, getting people to the arboretum safely, so this way people can walk, can park and walk along a sidewalk. So I think this is terrific, and so happy to see that this is coming down the pike. So any, with that, is there anything else in the consent agenda that anyone would like to comment on? So let's just take a vote on it. Do I, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so, and now we're on to councilmembers' new business. Does anyone have, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Just two. Believe it or not, just two. I was trying to think of a third thing, I couldn't do it. So first, I just want to take a moment to say, job very well done to Director Ozarowski, Chris Hollenstein, Gretchen Masterfano, Jeff Zelenuski, and the rest of the Summit Family Aquatic Center team for the dedication of a slide in memory of Big Mike Travisano, who sadly died of COVID a few months ago. I was there for the dedication with members of his family, and the camp kids were there, and as a former lifeguard who knew him well, I can tell you, this is a very fitting tribute to a very special person. So thank you to everyone who made that happen. The second thing relates to the vaccine numbers, which I have on my computer here from the vaccination dashboard through the state website. So at least one dose in Summit, all ages, is 78% of our population. Eighteen and over is 96%. The complete course of a vaccination, all ages, is 72%, and eighteen and over is 89%. So those are incredibly impressive, I think, and it's the responsibility, I think, of leaders to encourage people to do the things that are going to help keep them healthy and safe. So these are effective, and they're keeping people from dying, and it's a good thing to go and get vaccinated. So thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Does anyone else, any other member of council have any comments? Okay, hearing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting's adjourned. We'll see you all September 1st.
Hey, you, too.
Have a great summer.
September 1st.